To the August 16th, 2022 meeting of the Fitchburg City Council, I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating your name and address. Seeing none, I ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode at this time. Counselor Ben Hasengah, would you lead us in the salute to the flag? Damages?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Hasengah?
Here.
President Zarella?
Here.
Counselor Boishman?
Here.
Counselor Kutter?
Here.
Counselor Craigin?
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Here.
Counselor Fleming?
She's not hearing the audio.
Here remotely.
Yeah, her audio is connecting. I think we'll have to mark her absence until her audio cuts in, and then as soon as she does.
Give us a thumbs up if you can hear us.
Yeah.
Counselor Green?
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Counselor Squallia? Seven are here. I did not count. Counselor Fleming, till she gets her volume.
Excellent, thank you. I'm actually just going to send her a message very quickly, just letting her know to let us know when she starts to hear volume.
Eight are here.
Counselor Cuthier.
Seven.
Eight.
We're eight.
Oh.
I apologize for the technical delays. All right, public forum. The public had been advised to contact the clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. None were brought to our attention. If there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item on the agenda, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and address, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and then you may speak for not more than two minutes. I am going to note, given the, not high, but comparatively high, number of people in the audience this evening, I will request that anyone try to avoid repeating what has already been said by others, just to keep us moving along. That said, anyone needing to come up?
Jacqueline Wenshi, Fitchburg resident, I'm speaking on agenda item 222-22. Fitchburg is one of the 10 poorest cities in the state. To say because we're poor and can't maintain our roads that we should add to our poverty by implementing a new tax disguised as a fee is like saying the beatings will continue until morale improves. This looks like a sneaky way to try to get around Proposition 2 and 1/2. We already have regressive excise taxes and regressive gas taxes. Several people in the city government, including Commissioner Erickson, answered questions I had. Based on the information I've gleaned, I believe the best thing is for you on the council to lobby the state to give us some of their big surplus for our roads. There's a surplus because we're already overtaxed. Your vote on this petition should be a hard no.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
David Mackey, Fitchburg resident, I'd like to speak on 222-22. I had recently emailed the mayor regarding the state of the roads because I had moved to the town, and obviously they're pretty bad. And I was informed there's 180 miles of roadway, and it takes about $1 million to pave one mile of road. So with the current budget, there's, is $1.1 million for FY '23. So it'll take approximately 180 years to pave the streets of Fitchburg. This is never going to be fixed, ever, in any of our lifetime. So I would like to see this petition moved to a vote, for the people to decide, let it be debated. But I do think to the seniors and to the poor of this town, the $200 fee needs to be imposed as a progressive tax. So what I would recommend is potentially by vehicle year, if you have a three-year-old vehicle, so zero to three years, maybe it's $300. I'm actually in that category. I don't want to pay an extra $300 in excise tax, but I do want to get the roads fixed. And then have it decline $200 for a 10-year-old car, and maybe it rolls off after 12 years or something like that. So the people with very high-mileage cars, people that are struggling, we're not adding that tax on top of them. So that would be my suggestion. I would also prefer to see grants used from federal government. There are grants available to Fitchburg as a historically underserved environment, so that would be nice to see those applications go in. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Come on up.
My name is James Norris. I'm a Fitchburg resident for the past couple of years. Quite frankly, I'm angered by this proposal. People of Fitchburg, we have enough problems, financial problems as it is, with high energy prices, with Unotel, the high rents, essentially everything. I realize that the roads need to be fixed, but it's quite frankly arrogant and lazy to say to Fitchburg residents, "Oh, well, you guys are going to have to pay an extra $200 a year because we can't figure out a way to get the roads fixed," even though we already pay excise taxes, gas taxes, every type of tax you can think about. So I respectfully ask that you remember that your constituents have difficulties affording bills as they are, and to set, to add in this extra tax, whether it be $200 or even $2, is just quite frankly asinine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bruce Cody, 44 Forest Street, Fitchburg. One of the things I see in this is the fact that it's not very clear as to exactly how you're going to go about this. I mean, what kind of taxation are you going to have relating to what cars? Are they going to be the ones registered in the city, those that are unregistered? There's no clear definition of exactly how they're going to institute this and exactly what type of vehicles this is going to relate to. I have a truck. I'm assuming that that doesn't matter one way or the other, the tax would be the same, $200 for that or $200 for a car. But to just put this out as a tax, I think if this is going to go forward, I think we need more clarity as to what, you know, this involves. I mean, what kind of cars, whose cars, if it involves certain years, so forth and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Teresa Pierce. I live at 148 Phillips Street in Fitchburg. I've been here all my life, basically. I know it's always a tough problem, you know, the roads in Fitchburg, it's not easy. But I'm just curious about other sources that we might use for money. I know several years back when we were all getting really hyped up about, you know, the cannabis coming in and we're going to really make some really good taxes, we're going to collect great taxes and things from this industry, but I don't, I haven't heard of nor have I seen really anything that tells us that we're gaining anything from that industry. I know my son lives in Colorado Springs, Colorado, and they get a tax rebate because they do so well. So my question is, before you start charging people, you know, more money, can we look at, is there something in that resource that we can put to the budget so that we can gain, you know, gain something that'll help us with the roads? You know, I guess that I would just say, let's look at everything before we start asking the people to pay more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will proceed to the next order of business. Thank you all very much. And we will get to this item when it appears on the agenda. Just for the information of those in the audience, though it is of course up to a vote of the council, the intention is that this will be sent to a committee of the whole for further debate before a final vote, but that is subject to the vote of the council. Counselor? Mr. President, is it possible to pull this out of order? We could, yes, if there is, if any, if no one has any objection.
Mr. President, I have an objection.
To taking this before the other items on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, we'll have to put it to a vote. So I'll construe that as a... Motion to take 222-22 out of order. All right. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Ben Hasengah? President Zarella?
No.
Counselor Boishman?
No.
Counselor Kutter?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
No.
Counselor Deena Tally? Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Squallia? Five yes, three no. Sorry, five no, three yes.
All right, motion fails. So next up, we have the report of the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kutter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, we had an Appointments Committee, a special meeting of the Appointments Committee, to appoint poll workers for the period of September 1st, 2022 through August 31st of 2023. Said poll workers were to be sworn in during the training session, and it was unanimously approved.
Move to approve the report of the Appointments Committee?
Second. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. We have communications from Joanna Balada, city clerk, with respect to the Votes Act, assignment of police officers and permanent in-person early voting. Rather than read this off, I'll turn it over to the clerk to present the...
Thank you. With COVID, there was a lot of things implemented in the voting process. One of them, so now they've developed this Vote Act, which was approved by the state on June 22nd, '22. And one of the items they added in the act was either a police officer or constable at every polling location. It has always been done between the city clerk, town clerk, and the police chief of said community to schedule that. Within this Vote Act, they're now saying city council select board need to vote to do that. So the vote that I need from our council and Chief Martino and myself both wrote a letter, we both agree on eight police officers that we've currently always utilized. This is nothing new. We've always had a police officer. They bring the ballots to the polls, they bring them back to City Hall, they monitor each polling location. So now it just comes from this board, council, to dictate what Chief and I have recommended. So within the vote, it's giving it back to the clerk and the chief to do as they've always historically done.
Thank you. Did you have anything that you wanted to add, Chief Martino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to reiterate what Madam Clerk said, the two of us got together. The system we've had in place for decades, it works well. I think it provides a sense of transparency, a sense of security to those that are actually voting in person, and we strongly felt that moving in the same direction was in the best interest of the city, and we hope that the council feels the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Squallia?
This proposed, it says motion, is this all that you need from us in order to permanently give permission from the city council? The motion is stated on the agenda?
Yes. And I did share that with attorney, and he has agreed.
Yes. I thought this was either going to come back as a petition. There was a, may I?
Go right ahead.
I thought that there was a document that I had seen in the past as a quote-unquote "vote," but we are certainly looking for a vote. I look at this now as a communication, and I don't know that you can amend this as a, to be reviewed as a petition, but we're looking for a formal vote with this language.
Unless the city solicitor finds it highly inadvisable, I would rule that because this is listed on the agenda with motion language being specifically requested, that that provides adequate notice to the public that such a motion might be made at this council meeting.
I think, and I, looking at it clearly, it looks like it's a request to the council to make a motion.
And will this suffice for this year alone and be voted on again at future elections, or is this a one-and-done?
I believe, Chief, I'm going to defer to you on that. This is, this is for all future elections unless otherwise voted. That was my understanding. It's my understanding that sitting councils, sitting board of select persons, they have to codify this language, and once you codify it and put it into some form of language within our city ordinances, then it's a one-and-done. So moving forward, this is, legislation is prompting sitting bodies such as yours to yea or nay, for lack of better terms, and then it is a one-and-done. But it does have to be memorialized in, you know, some type of order coming from the council.
Excellent, thank you. So it sounds to me as though we can vote this tonight to give authorization for the immediate case, and then ask the solicitor to prepare a draft ordinance for us to codify it for the future?
I'd be happy to review that. I'm not, I'm not aware that an ordinance is required, but it might be informative for future constructs of your body here to have it in ordinance form. So maybe that would be the most prudent way to go. So please allow me to review that.
Excellent, thank you. All right, the matter is for the council. Any other questions or comments?
Move to approve the motion as noted on the communications section.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, well, actually, since the, since the law around this is new and procedurally maybe uncertain, can we please have a roll call on this, Madam Clerk?
Absolutely. Counselor Ben Hasengah?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutter? Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
And Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Next, we have Order 221-22, eminent domain for the Circle Street Bridge replacement project, temporary and permanent easements as outlined in the enclosed order. Solicitor?
Mr. President, thank you. So this is the third time in recent history that we've done a road improvement project. We've recently done the Safe Roots to School by the South Street Elementary School. Recently, we have also done the Summer Street Improvement Project with the new sidewalks and the new streetscape that's there. This is following closely in track, being supervised and overseen by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and also through federal grant money. This taking has come before the council on a couple of occasions previously. This council's approved an appropriation for title work and the damages awards that you'll see in the order on the second-to-last page. This council has then had heard of this in the form of a petition prior to, and now this is the order for taking. We've had contact with just about, well, with everyone on the list. They've been contacted by the appraiser, invited to participate in the appraisal process. The appraisal has been reviewed by a review appraiser, and these damages results, amounts are the result of that process. Some of the folks that I've been in negotiation with regarding an actual purchase and sale of the easement, and that may still come to fruition on some of these items, but at this point in time, we're asking for the council to approve this order of taking and award of damages.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Roche?
I asked the city solicitor a question.
If he's willing.
When you say damages, what do you mean by damages?
So you primarily have two forms of easements here. You have a temporary easement where constituencies, the constituent's property will be used temporarily during the construction period. We don't know when the construction period is going to occur, so the temporary easement spans a period of three years. And then you have permanent easements here, and those easements would be where we're taking a very small strip of the constituent's property, and we're going to improve that by either making that part of the street, but in most cases, part of the sidewalk on Circle Street. All right.
Now, as this is, I believe, the first time we're seeing this, but it is time-sensitive and hence on this agenda.
The, and I would say that if I can address the time sensitivity of this, this was a project that was extremely time-sensitive in order for us to get this approved and finalized and packaged at the state level to qualify still for the federal funding, which they have a fiscal year that closes at the end of September. With that being said, they put us on pause for a couple of months during this process because there were some issues that came up at their level as to whether or not there was going to be readiness for this particular project. They asked us to then proceed, so we were able to work with our clerk and get this, I feel almost somewhat responsible that we're all here in an August evening, because this was, I think, one of the first things that we wanted to put on. There was a couple of title issues too that really jammed us up for a short period of time. One was a very curious issue as to who owned the portion of the Nashua River that runs in between Circle Street and Rosestone Street, and there were some discoveries about that. And lo and behold, the assessor's office has been correct this whole time, and the city of Fitchburg owns that property, so. But I apologize if there's a little bit of delay, and we are scrambling at this point, but we would love to have the council review this and vote on this tonight, and if it's approved, we can report back to the Department of Transportation and get the project underway. The other thing about this project, just so council's aware, is this is one of the first projects, and the next project will be the River Street Bridge project. We want to get this project done. Having the Circle Street Bridge repaired obviously will be important for safety of the constituency, but also will facilitate the DPW's operation when the River Street Bridge project goes underway. Thank you.
Move to approve Order 221-22.
Second.
Can I please first entertain a motion for suspension of the rules on this item?
Motion for suspension of the rules? Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Ben Hasengah?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutter?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
That's 8-2.
Move to approve the order 221-22.
Second.
I now have a motion and second to approve the order. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Petition 092-22, Chief Ernest Martino, Fitchburg Police Department, to add to Chapter 40 relative to the Fitchburg Police Department, civilian traffic control specialists. Chief?
Thank you once again, Mr. President. I've spoke about this petition a few times now in front of this body. It's my desire to bring civilian traffic control to the police department to help assist us in the amount of detail work, construction detail there is throughout the city. As many of you are aware, there's been substantial changes throughout Massachusetts on how you certify police officers upon retirement. We're very fortunate that we, upon retirement, we swear them as specials. However, that's not happening in a lot of communities, and what's happening is you have an abundance amount of police officers who are retiring at an early age, and now they can't continue to serve in that manner as a traffic control specialist. By enacting this as a civilian control, it doesn't fall under the requirements under the state post system, and we saw this as an opportunity to bring trained police officers that are retired into our city to help out with some of the construction details. The second part of it, which is, which was more attractive to me, was the availability of Fitchburg State University criminal justice majors. We have approximately 100 students up there that are aspiring to go into law enforcement, and the way I drafted policy at the department, the civilian traffic control would be, we would make it available to juniors and seniors at Fitchburg State University in hopes to attract them to come to the police department, earn some extra money directing traffic, and then take a liking to the city of Fitchburg and want to stay here. I just see a lot of resources up there that are leaving the city, and this may be another way that I can try to maintain those resources. So it's in, it's in front of you again tonight as a petition. I know the solicitor drafted ordinance form that's on the back of this agenda this evening, and I hope that the council can support my endeavor in this matter. Be happy to answer any questions that's related to this.
Motion for suspension? Thank you. Just a moment. I wanted to note that if there is no objection, we will pair this with Ordinance 223-22, which is one item further down the agenda, but they're the same, they're the same exact item. One is just in petition form, and the other is in ordinance form.
Motion for suspension on 220, 092-22 and 223-22.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I would like to ask you, before we start taking a vote, I'd like to ask some questions, Fitz.
No, there's a, there is a motion on the table for suspension. We have to deal with that first, and then we can have questions. All right, sorry about that. I have a motion and second for suspension on 092-22 and 223-22. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, motion for suspension passes. The matter is before the council, and I have Counselor Boishman with a question.
Chief, I got one question. When you say civilians, what do you mean by that? You mean Fitchburg State students or regular people from the street?
So the distinction is between sworn personnel. Sworn personnel, now in the state of Massachusetts, you have to have a professional license to be a police officer. That was through the creation of posts, through, through the police reform legislation. So you have sworn police officers that have a professional license to be law enforcement. Civilian is they're going out there, they have no powers of arrest, they're not police officers. We're going to train them on the proper flow of traffic control. We're going to train them in CPR. They're going to be trained in certain aspects. However, they will not have law enforcement powers. They will not look like police officers. Their uniforms will be substantially different, so that's what I mean by civilians. And just to make it, this is a, you're seeing this throughout the Commonwealth now, and I believe we're probably the one of the last communities in central Mass that is actually bringing this forward. This is, this is a common theme throughout the state just because of a response to the police reform legislation.
No, Chief, I still ask a question.
Go ahead.
Wish you was an example, Perry Pappers was on Rosestone Road or Rosestone Street over here, right up here, and the lights got stuck, and they had a backup of trap, traffic. Now, if he wasn't there and you had a civilian, could that civilian go out there and stop the traffic and tell the traffic to go?
They will, because they're working under my authority through ordinance form that they can have the ability and the authority to control and manipulate the flow of traffic. So, yes.
Okay. I'm all in favor of it. All right. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, so I assume because they have farless qualifications, they're still in school, they don't have the same powers as an officer, they're going to be significantly cheaper?
No. It would, it's, first of all, the rates are not paid by the taxpayers. The rates are paid by the contractors, whatever contractor it is. The rates would... The rates would remain the same. You can't have, you can't have identical work with different rates, so the civilian traffic control would be paid at the same rate that a police officer is working as a special or a full-time police officer at one of these construction sites.
I see. And I know that there's fears always of maybe people, vehicles not following, say, a construction worker who's out there with a walkie-talkie and a stop sign, whereas a police officer's going to get a much better response. In other municipalities and communities, do we, do we have this problem, or is it?
So civilian traffic control will be out there in a very identifiable uniform, high-visibility vests, high-visibility hats. They're going to have two-way communication with the police station, so if there is a problem where someone is not following their directions as a traffic control specialist, just like our parking control clerks, they have the ability through two-way communication to get right to the police station and during the daytime, have a police officer respond to assist them.
Thanks, Chief. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Move to approve 092 and 222-22, 223-22.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to, if there is no objection, I'm going to consolidate this under 223-22 only because the ordinance requires a stricter vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for 223-22?
Counselor Dan Hesinger.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Di Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squaya.
Aye.
Eight-two.
Thank you. Motion passes. The ordinance is passed through its first reading and will receive its final reading at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Next, we have 222-22.
Take a motion to give 222-22 leave to withdraw.
Second. The matter is not before the council yet. It stands referred, at the moment, to the Legislative Affairs Committee.
Where does it say that, Mr. President, on the, on the agenda?
It doesn't need to say it. It's by operation of the rules. The, the notations on the agenda are for convenience, not as a matter of substantive There, I would request a motion for suspension to put it to council as a whole, to be scheduled prior to, well, to be scheduled as, as convenient within the first week of September.
I make that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and second to suspend the rules, to send this to council as a whole. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dan Hesinger.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
No.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Di Natale.
No.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squaya.
Nay.
I can't put you down like that, Sam.
Five, yes. Three, no.
And that is...
Shame on you.
I'm sorry, I'm doing math in my head. That's always a bad idea.
So we have the present. Is it a majority or two-thirds?
It is two-thirds. All right, so that motion fails by one vote. At the moment, again, to reiterate, this stands referred to Legislative Affairs. I will, before I entertain any further motions on the matter, I'm sorry, Mr. Solicitor?
Not on this matter. I interrupted you before you closed the meeting.
Oh, all right, yeah, before we close the meeting. I know there is a matter that the attorney needs to circle back to. Just a moment, Counselor. Before I entertain any further comments or motions on this matter, I am going to break with custom, though not with the rules, and briefly introduce this matter simply because, simply in light of the large amount of inaccurate missing, I'm sorry, inaccurate information that has been floating around about it. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not pretending that anyone who has any objection to it is misinformed, but some of the specific objections that I've received over the past few days have indicated that people assume this does something that it does not do. So first, this is not a proposal for the council to impose any fee or tax on anyone, simply to put it on the ballot as an option for the voters. The reasoning for this is that all of us here, I think I can confidently speak for all of us here, when I say that the refrain we hear from the voters all the time is "do something about the roads." And, believe me, I drive the same roads. It's a reasonable complaint. However, as we discuss every year around budget time, there just isn't any free money to move around and dump into the roads, and the state seems highly unlikely to actually give us additional funding. So we have essentially two standard options, one being a debt exclusion, the other being a tax override, neither of which I'm going to get into right now, but those options have been around for a while. There doesn't seem to be the appetite to go for them. Counselor Boishman came to me last year with an alternative. It doesn't have to be the be-all and end-all, though I do think it is a good proposal with perhaps some tweaks made to it. But the idea is, we wanted to put forward some other option, rather than simply continuing to say, "we can't afford it." So all, what this proposal is, is a rough draft to be discussed by the council prior to putting it on the ballot, if the council decides to put it on the ballot. A lot of, I know there was one request for more detail in terms of exactly how it would be targeted and so forth. These are things that do certainly need to be discussed before it goes to a ballot question. The, the exact amount of the fee would be subject to discussion and amendment. All of this is subject to discussion and amendment. The advantage of the proposal, of course, would be that it would generate quite a bit of additional revenue, which would be isolated solely to road repair. We wouldn't have the problem of the excise tax where it gets, where it's already been committed to multiple other line items that we can't reasonably cut at this point. However, I do want to make it clear that this is intended as an option. If the voters vote it down, okay, that's the choice of the voters. If the council votes it down, certainly I won't hold it against anyone. The, I would just like everyone to give it a fair hearing, that's all. This does not, the, oh, one particular misconception that I've seen was particularly widespread, and I just want to reassure people on. The five-year term in the proposal has nothing to do with what cars are, are going to be subject to it or anything like that. Someone got the idea somehow, I don't really know how, that we were going to specifically target cars that were five years old or older, which would, of course, be an incredibly regressive proposal. That was never the intention. The intention was a five-year sunset clause, meaning that if it were approved by the voters and then implemented by the council, it would then go back to the voters five years later to say, "continue or stop it." That said, I don't want to get too much into it, because we are not going to be debating it tonight in the absence of a motion.
Mr. President, may I address the council?
Yes, sure. You can also introduce the proposal as well as a cosponsor, if you like.
I, like Anthony, the council president stated, I proposed the thing. I proposed it probably four years ago, but I'm not a good writer. I'm asking my city councilors tonight, not to defeat this, to sit down what we're supposed to be doing, solving the problems of the city of Pittsburgh. We're here to do that, not think about getting reelected. I'm sorry if I get excited. I got too many phone calls with damaged cars, with blowouts, with front end, dropping their front ends. There's car after car I see on the side of the road in the last two years with their dropped front ends. They have to have them pay, they have to have them told to pay. I paid $2,400 on a car that's eight years old to have my front end. I drive exactly 3,000 miles a year, and the city of Pittsburgh, 3,000, 2,400. You talked about can't afford it? Know what the guy told me? You can't afford it? Put it on your credit card. I'm sorry, I get excited when they talk. Put it on your credit card, and if you can't put it on your credit card, leave the truck here until you pay me. I get another letter. I show...
Let's hold off on the letters for now, but...
Anthony, but when I'm asking the city council, it's a proposal. We sit down and let's talk about it, and let's come up with a plan, and let the people of Pittsburgh decide. Let them decide, not the 11 councilors, because you got a couple of emails. Let them decide. Come up, and let's use our heads and make it fair to them. And so when they read your proposal, they can say, "I believe in it and I don't believe in it, and I will support it and I won't support it." There's nothing lost and nothing gained, but our time, our time. Give them something to fight for. You're hurting the city of Pittsburgh. We're hurting everybody. Everybody's getting hurt, the poor. We act like the poor don't drive. The poor drive. They got cars. Their cars break down. Can they afford it? Can we afford they for it? The only one that fought it, I'll tell you who loves this city more than anybody else. You know, profits. They love us. They're coming here, they're going to help the poor.
Okay, Counselor, I think we're getting a little too much into debate at this point.
All right. But anyway.
But thank you.
And I asked, I'm asking the council to let it go through, we sit down and talk, we put our heads together as 11 people to represent the people of Pittsburgh, and come out with a plan in November so they can say yes or no. Now, the only thing I give them, I give you my word, the money will go where we say it's going to go. I give you that word. Oh, get me out, but it will go there. I live here. I want the roads fixed. It's fair, it's not right. It's not right. We're hurting your city.
Point of order.
Counselor?
All right. I'm sorry. Well, I get excited. I'm sorry, I'm not yelling at you, I get excited, and it's true, we're hurting your city. We're hurting businesses. I get people that are coming in, they say they won't come here. They won't go to the businesses.
All right. I see Counselor Di Natale, I do want to offer one minor caveat that I should have mentioned up front. In discussing this, both today and at any future date, we're going to be talking a lot, necessarily, about how bad the roads are. I just want to emphasize that is not a reflection on our DPW. They are doing the very best they can with the resources that we have managed to give to them. I just want to make sure that none of this comes across as a critique of their diligence or capabilities. That said, Counselor Di Natale.
What, Mr. President, I want to ask two questions. First question is, what motion can I make to stop this from going to legislative affairs?
You would have to make a motion for suspension.
And my second question is, by making that motion, can we speak on that motion, or suspension doesn't allow speaking?
Suspension is a non-debatable motion.
Non-debatable motion. So I am, so I can't explain why I want to make a suspension of the rules to not send it to legislative affairs?
The maker of a motion is allowed to make a very brief and concise statement as to why they're making their motion.
I, I make a motion to, is it leave to withdraw?
No, motion for suspension of the rules.
Okay. I, I ask for motion, do I have to, I'm sorry, I keep asking questions, I don't know the rules about you.
No, it's okay.
By saying suspension of the rules, do I then explain what I am trying to do with the suspension of the rules?
Basically, but again, very briefly and concisely. A suspension of the rules would bring it before us this evening for voting.
Motion made, motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of not sending this to committee, I am ready to do this now, and I am not going to support it. I don't care what committee it goes through, I don't care what the tweaks are.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Counselor Dan Hesinger.
No.
President Zerella.
No.
Counselor Boishman.
Absolutely no.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
No.
Counselor Di Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
No.
Counselor Squaya.
Aye.
And are we checking with Counselor Fleming's raising her hand?
Counselor Fleming, do you have audio access yet?
She's muted.
At the moment, you're muted.
How's that?
Excellent. We now have Counselor Fleming.
Oh, God, okay, yes.
You may, you may record your vote on this, then.
Okay, yes. Could you hear me?
Yes, we got, we got a yes from you.
Okay, okay.
Five no's, four yeses.
Motion fails. All right, in that case, this stands referred to Legislative Affairs, which will be scheduled as soon as is practical. And then the city solicitor has an item that we need to circle back to. Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I apologize, I didn't point this out when you called 22, 21 hyphen 22. It's listed on your agenda as an order. It is an order of taking. It is noted for a public hearing. It's been noted for a public hearing. Notice went out stating a public hearing will be held on August 16, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Legislative Affair Building, Affairs Building at 700 Main Street, Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, and the, on the following order. Order eminent domain for Circle Street Bridge replacement project, Circle Street, Broad Street, and Main Street, temporary and permanent easements as outlined in the order, signed by our excellent city clerk. I think that you would behoove the council to open a public meeting in light of the fact that you had that notification going.
Yes, certainly, certainly. If that, if that is the way it was noticed, and that is what is procedurally required, then I will have to just deem our previous vote invalid, and we will open a public hearing now to...
I apologize for not pointing that out in the moment.
Quite all right, quite all right. All right, public hearing, I now declare the hearing open on 221-22. I don't actually have my public hearing script in front of me. Do you have one? We don't do all that many public hearings, so I don't have all of it memorized.
So you did, you opened?
Thank you very much. All right, and we already heard from the solicitor on the substance of the petition. Was there any, is there anyone in the audience here who was not here when Solicitor Pusiteri introduced this takings order? Seeing none, we will forego reintroducing it. We already also had comments and questions from councilors, so I will forego revisiting that unless any counselor has something to add. All right, so in the audience, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone in opposition to this petition? All right, if all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed, and the matter is, again, before the council.
Move to approve.
We'll wait just one moment, as I see our colleague returning.
Move to approve 092, 221-22.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Mr. Solicitor, does this require a supermajority?
Yes, it would, sir. I think it's a taken, yes.
Madam Clerk, did we have a roll call on the previous vote? I don't recall.
No, you did not.
Thank you, Counselor Shilts.
Was that for the suspension or for the actual vote?
The actual...
Yeah, okay, so that was not the roll call. All right, can you, would you please call the roll on 221-22?
Counselor Dan Hesinger.
Yes.
President Zerella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Di Natale.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squoya.
Aye.
Thank you. That's nine yeses.
Thank you very much. It passes unanimously, and I apologize to anyone who was here to hear about that for the procedural pickup.
Move to adjourn.
We have one announcement, I'm sorry, two announcements, three announcements. Two from Counselor Shilts. The first in-person meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, from five PM until five, from four PM until five-thirty PM in room two oh three at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, one thirty North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate. Additionally, Counselor Shilts is hosting a Ward One Community Meeting on Monday, September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at six-thirty PM here in the Legislative Building, seven hundred Main Street. And Economic Development Director Mary Jo Bohart and Chief of Staff Natalia Oliver will make presentations and then answer questions. Finally, the city clerk, Ms. Bilata, would like to remind residents of the upcoming state primary election, September sixth, twenty-twenty-two. The last day to register to vote is Saturday, August twenty-seventh, at City Hall from nine AM to five PM. And early voting will be held August twenty-seventh through September second, here in the Legislative Building, with hours posted on the city website. Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. If there is no objection, we are adjourned.